So would my council member be Mr. Layton or Mr. Gibbons? Maybe now and or.
They thought required this body to announce the sign of the copy with a curriculum meeting that is available in the back of the room. We think this is my beginning.
Sir.
Thank you. Lane.
Here.
Here.
Harrington.
Yes, here.
You're there?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. We can all stand please for a moment of silence. All by the pleasure. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't want to present an agenda, approve this agenda, if the plan that's submitted. I'm Mr. Uker and Ben Johnson.
Recording in progress.
And that was the motion, Uker, Simon, Johnson.
Correct.
Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Sisson? Layton?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Uker?
Yes.
Motion Carrington. Item two, approve the next of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular council meeting. And correct me, of course, we sent motion and Dale Harrington?
Lane?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Abstain.
Harrington?
Yes.
Uker?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrington? Item three, open a public hearing to receive comments on application for class one liquor license from the Drive Golf and Lounge LLC. Think everybody has a copy of that? Come from Layton, had a question about, you have eight o'clock in the morning?
That, that was just for the, for the rear of the building, like all, so.
Will there be somebody there?
I mean, it, it will all, it will be all locked at all time in the last seven hours.
Okay.
Thank you.
Another question that I have was, it's going to be locked up, you could have high school students or middle school students playing golf or something?
Sure.
Good question. Any other questions for Eric? If not, I will close the public hearing. Item four, consider recommendations for class one liquor license application from the Drive Golf and Lounge LLC. There is a, a church across the street, sixty-five foot, and they have signed off on that, so that's not a concern.
Do you have a sign up?
You, you have to be a hundred and fifty foot away, from a church, a university, a school. Yeah. They signed off, I think, four or five, or there was one person voted against it, so. So that's not an issue. Motion to approve. I'm Uker. My fingers move hurt.
Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Derek. Love it. Item five, consider request from Lost Way Brewing to lock off a portion of Grant Street and benchings for the five-year anniversary event on November fourth. Congratulations.
Wow, we're turning five, guys, crazy. Okay, so the STL form that I submitted is the wrong one. It's approved by the state, but I'll let you guys pass this down, and then that should go around. So when I first submitted this a couple of weeks ago, we weren't sure a hundred percent what all we were going to be doing, so I just thought I'd ask for all the permission, and then we could scale it down after we did too. So obviously we're scaling it down quite a bit. I talked to Mark and Dresky over at Carquest, so on that new paper I sent, around the orange area is going to be the fenced-in area. There will be one entry exit on the northeast corner of that lot. We'll have our beer tent set up right by the entry exit, so that way we can kind of keep an eye on who's coming in and out. The blue box is going to be our food truck, which is Braxton's Barbecue, I believe he's at Mid-Cove, but I feel like I'm lying about that. And then I have a mobile axer ring company out of Broken Bow that's going to be coming, and they're going to be setting up in the red area.
Cool.
And this one we can throw away?
Yes.
And will this, this, I'm not, it is going to be fenced in?
Correct, it has to be fenced in.
You got to fence it in yourself, or is that where you're wanting from?
Well, you know, Kim's just really great to work with, and I enjoy going and hanging out with them, so.
So you're going to help?
Meet up with this. I do have some snow fence, so I can snow fence in part of it. The building on the south side will, you know, we don't have to use the fence for that, and then we can use the food truck and the little axer ring for that west side of the fence area also. So basically, we just want the north side of that lot kind of blocked off, and then the east side of the lot also. But we wouldn't be blocking off any type of streets or anything like that, so the streets will still be available and looking for people to use.
What's the timeframe?
The event is going to be going from five to eight. I asked for liquor license, I, I think I asked for it earlier in the day, like at noon or something, it's usually what I do, just to make sure I'm good on each end of it. So we can set up a little bit earlier if we need to.
So you're not asking to block the intersection?
No.
Just, just that.
Just, just use of that area and then help with fencing if possible.
Is that our area? No, that's more than just there. Really, and you just snow fence is all you're asking for?
Yep.
And help install the overall to that curb?
No.
See how easy he is to work with?
Scary.
I know. No, it's.
Halloween's over. Any more questions or concerns from staff or council?
What time did you want us to set up?
I'm thinking probably like three-thirty, if that's cool.
And teardown?
Tear down, I think, eight, eight-thirty will be fine, we should be done with all of that by then.
We're assuming this is a commercial mobile axer ring outfit that has all the correct entrances and whatever place?
Yep, and Mark talked to his insurance, he did the same with mine, and then the liability for the liquor license falls on us, so.
Awesome. Motion to approve. I'll say that. Bruce Hackens? Sam Uker?
Wees?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Uker?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Luck and luck.
Thank you. Also, here, I just wanted to say thank you for approving businesses to use the right way. That's going to be really exciting for us, and so thank you for doing that, I really truly appreciate it.
Item six, consider light health insurance option from Legacy Brokers LLC, Mr. James Powers.
Howdy, howdy.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Thank you. This is normally the time of year I deliver just the renewal and kind of talk through some of the other market options and what, you know, what else is out there. This year, we went a different route, we looked at the light plan through Blue Cross Blue Shield. The light plan is the league insurance government health team, is how they came up with that acronym, I think they came up with the acronym first and maybe, maybe fill the numbers later. The, I believe the league hasn't had an association health plan for quite a few years, which is why we haven't been part of it for the last, at least the last, going back to two thousand and eight, I think is the, that's been a long time. And that's when we first met, so that was, for those that weren't, weren't on the council at that time, we were, we were looking at a forty-four percent rate increase from Blue Cross Blue Shield. We made some, made some changes, we were brought in, made some changes, looked at the health savings account as a separate plan option to lower cost. In two thousand and eighteen, so about nine or ten years later, we felt like it was time to move on to a self-funded plan where we had a little more control of cost and claims data. We've been in that for the last five years, we've really seen the bell curve kind of flatten on our overall spend. The league has been hard at work behind the scenes, putting together a new association health plan with Blue Cross, and it's a steal for the city. To, not to ruin the end of the book here, but it's a, it's a significant savings for, for oldage to make that change, and so our recommendation is to make that change. If you'll indulge me for a few minutes as I bore you with some of the stats. First page of your packet here shows this year's plan performance, we still have to finish up this year in the, in the self-funded world, so we've got to get through December. But our projections at this point, we should finish the year out, plus the, plus the runout, because claims don't get paid immediately, they take a while. We should finish out paying out about eight hundred thousand dollars in claims. We should have a surplus after that of about ninety-eight thousand that we can apply to the Blue Cross premium. That surplus, we won't actually get a final reconciliation of until July of two thousand and twenty-three, but I'll be back before then, so maybe move forward with Blue Cross, because, well, we'll get to that too, but we'll be back in the summer to kind of put a cap on the self-funded year. But this year, we're running, we're running pretty well, and we've had some bumps along the way the last couple of years, but this was a year where we felt like we really got things turned back around. If you turn page three, though, what's interesting is this is the first time in the last five years that we've been looking at this benchmark, and this benchmark is from two thousand and sixteen, so I haven't gone back and pulled the benchmark data. But government health plans since two thousand and sixteen have been averaging about thirteen, almost fourteen thousand dollars per employee per year. This is the first year where we've actually surpassed that mark, that benchmark, we're at fifteen thousand on average per employee per year is what we're on pace to spend. The next page is just a balance sheet showing what we've got in surplus right now, we've got a hundred and sixty thousand sitting in that, that claims account, but again, we've got three months to go. October's already in the books, but I don't have those reports until next week, so once we have all of those reports, we'll, we'll finish up the claims detail. Next page is another one that you get every month, but the aggregate analysis that just tells you where we're at as opposed to our maximum liabilities, which helps balance out the other, the other three pages. Next page with fancy blue charts on the bottom, that's our threshold of individual claims, anybody that hits more than thirty-five thousand dollars in claims shows up on this report. And not names, for those that can't see the report, not names, just really general information about the fact that we have several claimants, six that have hit more than thirty-five thousand in claims, so if you do the math, three hundred and forty-six thousand in claims out of five hundred thousand total across the group, we have six claimants that are probably eating up about seventy percent, eighty percent of our total claims. Just this year? Yeah, just this year.
That doesn't have anything to do with a continuing case from last year or anything?
It could, but the, the way the claims, claims get reported are based on when they're, when they're paid, incurred and paid, so they would be claims incurred in this plan year, so it could be a diagnosed condition from a prior year, but it's, it's a service being rendered this year. Great question. All right, so that, that kind of gets you up to speed with year-to-date on claims. The next colorful page, and I forgot my readers, is current rates on the, in the white columns on the left, the blue columns in the middle are the renewal. And normally, we'd be talking about what do we want to do, go back and negotiate on the renewal. This year, there was no question. Blue Cross is on the right-hand side, to make a, make a change to Blue Cross. Well, let me start with, the renewal at first blush is two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar increase. The Blue Cross Blue Shield plan is a five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar decrease. The, the net between renewal and, and Blue Cross is almost eight hundred thousand dollars in savings. I'd be a fool to say, well, you should, we should really consider then, that self-fund renewal. I'll say this, they, I did talk at length with McKinnis Group about what they're, what they've structured with Blue Cross, I talked at length with, with Blue Cross. This is, this is something they've been trying to figure out for a long time, ever since the ACA came in, it made it really difficult for association health plans to come back together. I just told you what we spent in claims. That premium doesn't cover our claims. Seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars doesn't cover our claims. What happens, they have fifteen rate tables that they're looking at across the state, and we're in table nine. They have, they have them by, by letters A through O, and we're in I, but we're in, we're in table nine out of fifteen. So think of it as an elevator, right? The higher we go on the floor, the higher our rates are. We're on the ninth floor is where they're going to drop us off first year, and it's not a, it's not a full year. The association health plan renews July first, so we'll go through renewal now, move, making the transition to Blue Cross, and then we would go back through the same process in July, subject to an increase in July. I don't think there's any chance that we're going to get a significant increase between now and July. And the top floor is, at fifteen, is probably double what this number is, if you think about kind of the spectrum, it's not going to be quite that high, because they don't start at zero. But there, but it's probably more in line with what we're actually paying on the self-funded side. But I think this gives us five years of runout, where we can enjoy some lower premiums than what we're paying today, lower overall costs than what we're paying today. Because we're going to be part of that association pool again, others, other cities and participants in that association plan will certainly, that's, that's, that's all I do behind the association plan, is they're all subsidizing each other. I think what'll happen with most association plans, what we've seen, and I've seen this in my twenty-two-year career, I've seen it with the Nebraska New Car and Truck Association when I got brought in to take that thing apart. What happens is, as groups start to see, hey, we're paying more in the pool than we would be if we're out on our own, groups leave, and what happens in the pool is it, it just ends up getting higher and higher risk, higher and higher claims, and the premiums get out of control until it falls apart. I don't wish that upon this pool, I just know that's historically what's happened from an actuarial perspective, but I think we can get a good five years out of, out of the association plan, unless they're able to bring in other entities, which I don't know, the league, I don't know if they'll, they're working on that or not, I know the past one was through NACO, this one looks to be pretty promising, though. There's actually the second, the next option, if you will, is probably more, probably more what I'd recommend, and that is maybe lower the deductible on the HSA plans, let's, let's benefit the employees a little bit with the change. It does have an aggregate deductible instead of an embedded deductible on the HSA, what that means, if, and we have a lot of families, they would have a higher, higher, they'd have to meet the family deductible before, before they, before the plan starts paying at a co-insurance level. So the, it's kind of a toss-up, there's, there's more savings on the first page, but it's a higher front-end deductible of thirty-five hundred. The second page just has a, a, it's one of those things that we, me and you may have to go through and go figure out what benefits are going to be right.
Probably allow the third option if we have.
You could do a third option, you could essentially do both of those HSA options, and, you know, allow the families to choose the embedded deductible and have the singles choose the, the lower deductible. The other side of that was, you know, when we went this, we helped back in two thousand and eight with the HSAs, we did it in an effort to curb the spend overall and get the difference in premiums, use that difference in premiums to put money in the HSA. There's not as big a spread as there used to be, and so I've said it for, how long have they, fifteen years? I'll say it again, and, and I don't mean that, but I think there's probably a benefit to not, either not going and funding the HSA, or maybe putting everyone into a single plan option, that's something you can certainly evaluate when you're looking at the financials. There's, there's, there's so much potential here, and, and at least over the next five years, to, to really do some, some clawing back. I didn't print this chart off for everybody, because this is a chart I keep every year, and I don't know if anybody ever pays attention to it, but this puts us back, it's like turning back the clock, to two thousand and fifteen on our premiums.
Can I add one thing?
Yep.
Talk about growth is positive, they're, they're expecting to probably add probably another twenty to thirty percent numbers to the pool in the next twelve months, so that pool's going to be bigger, and so that'll help keep costs down as well.
Yeah.
At least for several years.
Yeah, the, the hope is that if we, they can do some other things to help curb the spend on the plan side, not so much the premium side, but help on the plan, with the plan spending. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say, by participating in the league plan, you actually, the, the contributions inside the league plan don't count towards your budget restricted funds, so they're an exception to this plan. Which is, which is a huge benefit. There, there's a little bit of timing, like time-sensitive things that we've got to worry about. It's not as simple as, hey, we're going to switch on Blue Cross. The way that they're administering this, the program manager, McKinnis, is using an online platform called Ease. Every member, every employee, or if we've got any covert dispense, has to log in and, and enroll for their benefits through the Ease platform, which is going to take some time to roll out. So while I'd say, hey, we've got, we've got the month of the number to figure out what we're going to do, we kind of don't, because we'd have to roll out, get people logged in, make sure there's not any tech issues there. And then that information gets extracted and sent on to Blue Cross, and then we can access Blue Cross's system to manage the rest of the benefits. The other caveat, if you flip the note page, is that you have to buy life insurance through Mutual of Omaha for all employees at a minimum of twenty thousand dollars, I think you currently have a principal benefit that would, would this would replace. We've never historically done anything with that, I haven't done anything with that principal benefit. You also must offer voluntary life and accidental death through Mutual of Omaha, and I have to get at least three people to install that. That's something that employees would have the option to enroll in, it'll all be loaded into that online platform. We have the option of offering long-term disability and dental at the rates quoted there, as well as vision on the next page, but the other two benefits we have to offer through that online portal are voluntary critical illness and voluntary accident. These are all benefits we support, I'll say as a, as a professional over twenty-two years, these are not benefits that I typically recommend, because they take contributions away from other things like the core benefit. But it's, it's part of the association plan, they, they're kind of requiring, well, they are requiring that we offer them. So the, the caveat there as we roll it out is, if one person wants critical illness and nobody else wants it, I can't, I can't install it, I have to have three people enrolled in the critical illness, the accident, and the voluntary life in order to, in order to install it. This includes covert administration through WEX, so we don't have to worry about Cobra through, Cobra, Cobra, Cobra.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. Ease on the benefit admin platform is something that we can, there's a way for us to tie this into payroll, you know, payroll deductions and feed that, that's going to be a connectivity issue that we'll have to work through. There's other administrative services that the, that the league is offering through First Concord, those are listed on the last page on the right. The main thing I wanted to point out was the additional costs that I didn't put in the medical proposal, that's in red on that second last page, which is four thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars, which is an estimate of fifty-seven people who are currently enrolled on the medical, I don't have a count on how many or not. Since this is employer-paid, if we have ten people that are not enrolled, we have to provide them life insurance through this program as well, so it could be a little bit more than five thousand dollars for that, but still doesn't chip away at all of the nearly eight hundred and somewhat thousand dollars in savings that we're going on. So I, I like to say, you know, I like to take responsibility, because this is the league, and this is the McKinnis Group, who's had, had a league plan for years, they've worked on it for years, and they've been trying to get something put together for, for a long time. But Blue Cross is, you know, Blue Cross is a broker-friendly company, and so, and I know the guys are at McKinnis my entire career, so this is something that we can work hand in hand with them on. From an implementation perspective, I have paperwork that, that I can pretty much fill out and get to date for, for the rest, and the timeline of implementation, I'd say as long as we had, as long as we had a green light go by next council meeting, I think that'll give us enough time to get everything rolled out to employees. My biggest concern is just communication to employees and their families.
Get them, get them signed up.
It's, it's, it's going on to an online system and putting in your, starting with, give me your username, password, social security number, and date of birth, it's one of the hardest things to do in today's environment. And just making sure that everyone knows, this is the only, there's not a form that they can fill out, this is the only way to do it, it has to go through that online platform. But once they get in that online platform, all of the rest of the magic happens with my minions and McKinnis minions behind the scenes to get it all done.
And they can access all of that, too, once they have that set up, I mean, they can access all of their claims and all of that information themselves.
Yeah, what we will not receive as, as a city, as an entity in this program, we will not receive claims data like we've been given. We're not going to see where every dollar goes, we're not going to see if we're subsidizing others or if others are subsidizing us. We won't see any of that, and we're going to switch to a July one renewal every year. Look, I love July one renewals, because January, everybody's trying to get to the same exit in this month, and it's really hard to get things done. But it does change, dramatically change, and be mindful of that for your budget, things to, you know, things to consider, and we're offering additional lines of coverage, which we end up with a bunch of people taking, you know, critical illness or accident, that could, that could end up with more questions and more opportunities for education for, with the employees. But it's, it's Blue Cross, you know, we haven't had Blue Cross for the last five years. I know, I, I mean, I, I hope that this association health plan doesn't end up like the last one, but it's hard to say. It's, it really depends on the commitment and loyalty of other members coming into the pool, and whether or not they're willing to stick around when the times get tough, so.
Jason, we're not going to pick the plan tonight per se, you just need a green light to move forward.
I need a green light to move forward, and that, ideally, if we say, hey, we want to, we want to figure this out, and I'd like to work with, with you guys on the plan designs and communication pieces, and, you know, I think it's probably worthy of a meeting of some sort, where we kind of bring it all hands on, that kind of meeting, to talk about the, the need for getting it done quickly.
I would recommend approving to, to make the move, and then we can work together to get the, the details figured out on this plan we're going to go with. I mean, most of the employees are going to be surprised that this is going to come, this is coming down the bike, I've talked about it in the negotiations, we've been talking about it for a year, I think, with, with league stuff, so it's nothing really new that they're going to be surprised by.
I just didn't think the pricing would come in, I, I really anticipated them coming, dropping us off on like the fourteenth floor. I really anticipated them coming, dropping us off on like the fourteenth floor and saying, eh, we'll save you a little bit of money, but that, I mean, that's significant, and it doesn't make sense to me.
So is that based on prior claims then, or they just picked a spot?
They looked at our risk, and they looked at the rest of what they're evaluating, and they've got certain levels. They're also not going to have fifteen tiers. They really want to get that down to a lower number. Right now, they're just trying to attract as many members into the pool as possible, so they've got a broad spectrum of tiers to do that. Otherwise, if, you know, if you can imagine, they only have five tiers, and we're in tier four or five versus tier nine, we're kind of in the middle, that'd be a lot harder for us to see the savings. But this, like I said, I think this gives us a five-year ramp to do some special things over that time.
Do you need a motion to go forward on this? Motion to the council?
He's done a good job with this for all eight years.
We got the details later. Uker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Given?
Yes.
Yes.
Very.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's very promising.
So, Jason, can you guys turn it over to me? Head in the looking.
Excellent. See why you don't do that, right?
There's a great brewery. It's right across from my hotel.
Item seven, approve of a revised interlokal agreement with the county of Phelps regarding the services of Phelps County Network Administrator.
It was just a change in his wage for the year. It's fine, it's good. Yeah, I swear to you, no, it didn't go down. Now, and I talked about, try to work something out, so we don't have to do this every year, putting some kind of a term in there allows for a certain amount of growth.
They started a figure, and I think this is probably more of a realistic figure for them and us, and I'm glad to have him available, of course.
I think the chief likes that, yeah. I do.
Motion to approve the revised interlokal agreement.
So.
I'll take it.
Ward one, Givens and Councilman Hyden, Layton.
Harrington.
Yes.
Uker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Layton here? Given?
Yes.
Thank you. Adopt resolution two zero two-two dash nineteen, authorizing Mayor Young to sign that twenty-twenty-two year-end certification of the city's street superintendent. By happy naming city's street superintendent, if we get six thousand dollars back through. That's more than Mayor Young. I don't get it. Motion to adopt resolution twenty-two dash nineteen. Yeah, Harrington makes the motions. Corey Wees, second. Uker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Layton here? Given?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Motion Derek. Item nine, approve of twenty-two slash twenty-three, potential order of police waiver and agreement for City of Holbridge FOP laws number twenty-three. Negotiated the wage with the FOP and I V E W. They're all in agreement, moving forward. All of you have copy. Motion to approve. Unless you have questions. I'll let them look. Chris Uker? Next, Matt? Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Layton here? Given?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Given?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Item ten, approve of the twenty-two, twenty-three International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers waiver and agreement for City of Holbridge I V E W local number fifteen ninety-seven. Pretty much the same contract, same increase, four and a half percent.
Make motion to approve.
Ben Johnson, second. Smith? Smith?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Layton here? Given?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Uker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Item eleven, adopt resolution twenty-two dash twenty, approve the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-three wage and salary schedule for the city of Holbridge.
Make motion to approve.
Ben Johnson, Dale Harrington, second. Smith?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Layton here? Given?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Uker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Item twelve, adopt resolution twenty-two dash twenty-one, amending the personal plan of the city of Holbridge, Nebraska. With our new wage increases, but we also have added a holiday, luckily. Martin Luther King Day. Got to find out through Olson and Associates, since we've added that, will be a virtual portion.
Well, that's not, that's not the way they were to do it. They, when they filled out our renewal for our application on a permit, they wanted to know what holidays we acknowledged. And just that's the first time in twenty-five years of filling out permits that's ever had that question asked. And I wrote this up several months ago, this has been talked about and coming around, that they're going to start pushing some of these holidays that the cities don't acknowledge. So it could lead into possible funding or not getting something if you don't acknowledge these certain holidays.
And this was all talked with the union?
Yes.
And through? Any questions? Motion to approve. Ben Johnson, second. By Corey Wees. Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Layton here? Given?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Uker?
Yes.
Johnson? Yes.
Thank you. Opening discussion for staff and council members. Public request to statement on what public forum was due to. The mayor runs the meeting. Mr. Lammer, thank you. Mr. Richter?
I put it in your back. It is some information pertaining to the grass and the nuisances that we've been working on. So if you want to read through those or if you got any feedback, just shoot me an email or give me a call. It's kind of, when we went through, Anna and I looked at it and it's by the chief, and we've all kind of, Dane and, so we've kind of got it all, kind of set where we want it, but look at it, see what you think, and if it's, want to see something added or changed, or, so, let me know. We can go from there.
We haven't heard back from the library yet.
No, they were going to meet today, and I did not hear anything from them, so.
Okay.
Let's throw the library a ask over.
City clerk, Mr. Chancellor?
All the unfortunate benefits from your approval of the I V E W contract. I'd like to thank you and the other myself and all the employees for the couple of weeks.
Office staff and everybody. I'm not an employee. Thanks. Anything else, Dan? Chief McIntyre?
The dispatcher hired, Paul Robinson, starts tomorrow. And I'm looking for a prime date to interview an officer up there, so.
And graduation is the fourteenth of December. Again, it's up to you guys.
Correct. Anything else, Chief?
I should do it.
Ah, see, November one, I think is when we have to get the boats and campers off the street. Start with Ward one here. Larry Given?
Nothing.
Now, Councilman Layton?
I want to thank Ken. He got the city work, doesn't he, about getting that pole in over there east of me?
Oh, oh, three poles east of my street?
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, God.
Yeah. All that credit. You're one.
Thank you.
That's a process.
Change a lot of holes out.
Yeah, change a lot of holes.
Good maintenance got done. That's all.
Corey? Want to thank Ken, city employees for their help all Saturday.
Oh, yeah.
Everything went well. It was a great turnout.
Cool. Good. Ward three?
Yeah. Just quick, November eleventh. Most of you guys probably know they're going to have a bachelor's day. I think I'll have to, at the park, it has a statue, dedication of the Lundy statue, and you guys are all welcome.
That statue has like a cherry on top of it, pretty.
What time is it? Ten AM. Ten AM. Ten AM. Yeah, it's nice. And they're working on more, developing some of these, working on more, more stuff for it, so.
Thanks for being on that committee. Mr. Johnson? Councilman Johnson?
Chief, I see that overtime was up quite a bit. We did a grant, or was there a particular reason why it was? Just still short. That's true, so. And then the guys at the academy, they passed the point of their comp time that they can approve, so now all those extra hours I have to give them overtime for. Good. So that's it. But one, you know, I think graduate, I did this two or three guys hopefully.
They still got a few over. Yeah.
Yeah, and then I did apply for two overtime rants, with a different ticket and the DUI. So once those hit, then I can use that to kind of help a little bit, but that's where we're at.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Uker?
Ah, yeah. Chief, just want to say, I see that there's been some citations been given for some, some engine braking going out, it's good. Hopefully that's put in paper, it'll probably be seen, recognized, so congratulations, thank you for that.
They're all home. Also. My God, you're doing it, so, yeah.
You're the fearless leader, so.
There you go.
You can pass that along to the, all of those, of course, thank you.
You bet.
Also, Mr. Parsons, as the mayor said earlier, said something about November first, or the deadline is approaching for boats and campers and all the stuff to be on the street. What's the word on that roll-off on the stat?
It's gone.
Is it gone?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome, thank you.
I missed that. It's been gone all week. I missed it.
I haven't known that, actually. All week, excuse me.
The roll-off on, at, 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 at. About the north.
East half of the way up there.
Lot of labor for.
It's not there.
Thank you. Pushing, pushing, pushing.
Excellent, thank you.
You answered it? We didn't. The best for last here.
Nick, hurry up. Just a question on these items for nuisance and so forth. We go through that and decide then those, that will amend the code.
Yeah, so we'll change some ordinances. Yeah. And we can do it that way, so it moves a little faster.
Yep. Yep, sure, okay, that's fine.
Mr. Casey?
Just on Trent's note about the engine braking tickets. I can confirm I filed several tickets, so hopefully we'll see some fine money from those here shortly. I haven't fielded some calls yet about them. And then Chris mentioned in his notes the vacancy registry. That's something we're working on. We hope to have a draft to you guys in just a couple of weeks. If you guys have thoughts or suggestions on that, feel free to get those to me here in the next week or so, and I'll get those put together, and we'll get a draft to you to review.
Awesome. Be nice going forward for that vacancy registry. Mr. Parsons?
South Sherman Waterline. They've got it all hooked up today. We have three guys going to, or four guys going to school in the next rest of the week, but we should be able to start coordinating and off next Monday, and hopefully get our all clear and have a thing in service within a couple of weeks, so.
Awesome. Now that ties in?
Ties in at Fourth, Fourth Street in South Sherman, all the way down to Thirteenth in South Sherman.
Awesome. Be a nice addition. Mr. Bricklin?
I just want to second one. Dane said, thanks for approving the agreements. The employees really appreciate it. Thank you.
The mayor's looking for a few volunteers for boards, authorities, commissions, either this mayor or Jim Littlerick. Contact either one of us if you're interested. We do have at least three openings right now while I'm hiding, a couple on, CRA, the, not CRA, the watchdog committee, we have a couple vacancies there, so we are looking. And Mr. Littlerick would like a list of all the volunteers on my, sorry to say, Jim, it's a pretty short list, but we like to have people involved in our community. We like to get involved in the effort.
Mayor, what is the watchdog committee, I'm sorry, what is that?
They oversee the LV eight forty-five's. That's what that is.
How's that?
Have sent.
How's that, Dane?
And I would like to see people call the council members more, you know, use your council members. Forget the council member. Either call council members, call, any call in the city office, eight-six-eight-one. Any question or anything like that. Other than that, a week from tonight or today, get out and vote. Use your privileges. Other than that, this meeting is adjourned.